I call the Board of Selectmen meeting for September 18th, 2017 to order as required by open meeting law. I am informing you that we will video, audio taping as well as live broadcasting in this meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that wishes to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Seeing no one, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement.
Hi, Jack.
My name is Jack Brown. I'm the president of the Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging, an IRS-designated nonprofit. This organization was established to provide support to the Towns Council on Aging and to our seniors at large. I ask you to save the date for a night of enjoyment, a dinner and dancing event I am going to fill you on right now. Take notes, especially the selectmen. On Friday, October 20th, the Friends of the Harwich Seaway is hosting an evening featuring an enjoyable meal, a cash bar, great big band ear and music played by a 20-piece band. The Sound Dunes will play. They'll be dancing, a chance to socialize with their friends and neighbors at a wonderful place. And you say, "What is that?"
What is that?
Very good. The 5:30 to 8:30 event will take place at the Sea View, 76 Chase Street, Dennisport. This is a fundraiser for our group, was all well as a fun night out. The price of the event is $75 per person. Cash or check in advance of the event and may be purchased by calling me, Jack Brown, at (508) 868-0743, or Richard Waystack at (308) 776-0964. Also, tickets may be purchased from the Harwich Chamber of Commerce at their office in Harwich Port. Deadline for ticket purchases is October 13th. Fund raised will go to senior-related programs. In summary, please put this fun event on your calendar and contact us to purchase your tickets. I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Could you just repeat Richard Waystack's phone number for us?
Richard Waystack, (308) 776-
(508)?
You know what? I'm thinking that's what it is.
Hey, Richard. We're debating your phone-
(508).
(508).
(0964). Did you forget my number?
No, I got it written down right here.
Thank you, Jack.
Wow. Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's his number.
Mr. Chairman and Board, I just want to comment quickly on the Cranberry Festival over the last two weekends. The beach weekend went very well and the revised and renewed festival over the weekend up in the center here by the high school behind the community center. I was a bit skeptical, I'm going to tell you right up front, but I stand before you to say it was a total success without a lot of hard work. Ed and Cindy, you're here. People like Lieutenant Concinine from the Police Department, Sergeant Hutton from the Police Department, Deputy Chief LeBlanc from the Fire Department, they've already started work for next year. But I want to, I just want to say from a professional point of view, it was, the people were great, they had a wonderful time, everything was safe. People, I've had a couple of comments about the fog. Well, I've been doing this a long time, I have yet to figure out how to stop the fog. I'm working on it, but everybody still had a great time. So it was a great venue and I hope that they'll do it again next year and I hope that we can expand on it. So, very pleased. And as a citizen, it was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, with that being said, Cindy Williams from the Harwich Chamber of Commerce. I have, mine's a little longer because I have a lot of people to thank. I'm going to start with a Bill Belichick quote that I used two weeks ago in The Chronicle because it is so true in what was accomplished over the past two weeks. Fall for Harwich kicked off with Beach Day at Red River Beach and the Harwich hometown parade in Harwich Port and continued with the Harwich Cranberry Festival at the new location behind the Harwich Community Center and our return of the fireworks this past weekend. There is only, there's an old saying about the strength of the wolf is the pack and I think there is a lot of truth to that. On a football team, it's not the strength of the individual players, but it is the strength of the unit and how they all function together. This too is very true with the Harwich Chamber of Commerce and our partnerships with our amazing fireworks sponsors, RPM Carpets and Floor Coverings, JFF Design, Harwich Cranberry Festival, Stonewood Products, Terry's TV, Kinlan Grover, and Outer Cape Health Services, the incredible work and assistance from my first call to Dan Pelletier with the Water Department, Deputy Fire Chief Dave LeBlanc, Harwich Police Lieutenant Kevin Concinine for all of their guidance and many meetings with me, and their dedication to the safety of our town and to Eric Beebe, John Mahon, and the Rec Committee, Carolyn Carey, Lee Culver, and the Facilities Committee for embracing the idea of showcasing the community center as part of the weekend with our first business expo, which was so successful for our members, they've already signed up for next year. An extra special thank you to the field cleanup crew yesterday morning. The plan was to return it to how we were given it and we did. Dave and Marcy LeBlanc, Rob Maydor and his family, and my daughter Taylor. And last but not least, thank you to the Board for your continued support of the Harwich Chamber as we come before you with new ways to grow, market, and bring awareness to the others about all our Harwich offers. It's a team effort and we scored big.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you for all your hard work.
Good evening, members of the Board. I do have a couple of quick comments I'd like to make. First of all, by way of background, my name is Richard Elrich. I am not a resident of the town of Harwich, I'm a resident of the town of Barnstable, but I read a report in the Cape Codder and in the Register online regarding your action last week to ban retail sales of marijuana and there was a great concern raised by what was quoted from your, both your-
Can you hang on a second?
Sure.
Chris, procedurally, he's not a resident of the town of Harwich. I'm not going to allow this public comment.
You shouldn't be afraid of the facts.
Thank you. No, it's not afraid of the facts, but thank you.
Sure.
You know where Barnstable is.
You wouldn't restrict anybody in Barnstable from speaking in public.
Great. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening, everybody. Michael, it's tonight regarding your meeting from September 5th as it pertained to me and the Housing Authority. You will remember, I could not attend that and I did respond to Ann on the matter, but I wish to thank Julie who spent time over a very busy holiday weekend talking with me, so I appreciated that. Tonight, I'm here to address a few things that were said at that meeting. I was not part of the petition for this year's town meeting that had the middle school up for discussion and the Housing Authority did not discuss the middle school.
Sally, I'm going to interrupt you as well. Are you speaking on behalf of the Board?
I'm not. I'm speaking personally.
You're speaking, you're speaking about the Board, so I suggest you, you send a request to the office and we'll agenda this next week.
This is public comment?
Sally, I'm going to have you removed if you continue to speak.
You have twice-
Sally, I'm going to have you removed.
And have me removed because twice you have not allowed me in public comment.
This is, this belongs-
This is my own response because you use-
This belongs as an agenda item with the Housing Authority, Sally.
You have used my name several times incorrectly and I wish to speak to that.
Sally. Chris. Turn the cameras off, please.
I can't turn them off.
Okay.
Are you saying that public comment in this respect, you will not allow-
You're speaking for the Housing Authority.
I am not speaking for the Housing Authority.
This is, this is not appropriate at public comment.
I am not speaking for the Housing Authority.
You are. Speaking. I spoke about the Housing Authority in everything you just saying, you're speaking for the Housing Authority. You agenda this, we'll agenda it for next week and we'll have a debate and I suggest you bring your board and we'll make it a board conversation. End of conversation, Sally.
I think you're wrong.
End of conversation, Sally.
I think you're wrong.
Any more public comment and announcement?
Michael, I have, I have a public comment.
Okay.
I missed this, but Jean McLaughlin passed away in August. You may, and I want to make this statement because others may have missed it as well. She was very active in Disability Rights Committee for many years. In addition to that, she was a member of the Mothers', I wrote this down because she was really an active member. She was a member of the Mothers Against Drunk Driving, National Head Injury Foundation, Mass Head Injury Association, CORD, which is Cape Association for the Rights of Disabled. Jean was hit by a drunk driver in 1984 and wasn't expected to live at one time and came back and she was one of the leaders of the Disability Rights Commission along with Carla Burke. And so it's a sad statement, but I missed this and I wanted to be sure that people were aware of it.
Thank you, Larry.
Larry, I brought that up, the night of her funeral.
I'm sorry.
That's right. Were you here? It was the day we appointed Matt and everybody on the-
Yeah, I missed that.
Great. Thank you, Larry.
Hi, I'm Ed McManus, President of the Harwich Cranberry Festival Committee and I'm just here to thank everyone in town who helped out, the folks at the Highway Department who do a lot of background work behind the scenes of getting barricades out and helping us mark the field so when we put up the tent, we don't hit an irrigation line, all of those little technical details that make it possible to put on the festival. All the folks at the community center, the custodians, Dan and Mike and Dave, who worked both Saturday and Sunday and went beyond themselves in being helpful, keeping everything clean, keeping everything functioning. Obviously, the Public Safety Departments, Police and Fire are always there, always helpful. I want to especially note Adam Hutton, who comes to our meetings all year long to make sure that we have a good liaison as we head up to the, the date of the festival. And I want to, you know, we have a small committee. It's about eight or 12 people depending on what time of year it is and we could always use some more volunteers, but Joanne Clancy, a former town employee, has been our treasurer and handles booking all of the artists and craftspeople. Bob Weiser helps us put together the music show. Al, Al and, I forget his wife's name right now, Carol Ryan from, they're actually from Dennis. He just helps with a lot of the physical stuff of hauling the trailer around and doing the setup. Fred and Kathy Monday also in that realm. Ed and Gers, who has taken over trying to organize, extra volunteers. And I also want to, this year, it really became very much of a collaboration. It wasn't just the festival, it was the festival and the Chamber of Commerce working together to put this on. And this year more than in past years, although we've had help in the past years, we've gotten a good boost from the Athletic Boosters Group at Harwich, at Montemoy Regional High School and we hope to expand on that and also a big help from the students of the Key Club at Montemoy Regional High School. They came out and helped on the day of events, sort of helping, lots of lifting and carrying and moving stuff around that's very necessary to make it all be a nice event. We're looking forward to next year. We had, there were some hiccups, nothing major that anybody particularly noticed except us who were watching it carefully and we'll iron those things out. And I also want to thank Lee, who with the Park and Rec Commission, or Youth and Rec Commission, obviously, they, they helped us and gave us some advice in permitting us to use the field, but Lee helped me approach his neighborhood, which is the one neighborhood that's right on the field and most, most heavily impacted and I think it was a very good experience between his neighborhood and, and the festival. I think they all, we all enjoyed it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Great job by all. The place was packed all weekend. Any other public comment and announcement? And moving on to the consent agenda and we are pulling number one under A. We have already voted on those minutes and we are also pulling F, the awarding of the contract for Sacotucket Marina. We're not quite there yet, there's still some missing components to this and we'll bring it back next week or the week after.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the following minutes. A2, the minutes for September 5th, 2017, the regular session. B, approve the application for a road race by fall 50 Cape Cod to be held September 30th, 2017. C, approve the appointment of additional election workers per the request of the Democratic and Republican Town Committees. D, accept the resignation of Robert Aaron as a member of this Council on Aging. E, approve the appointment of James Hilliard as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals from an alternate position.
Second? Sure. Any discussion? Don?
I just want to point out to the Board, we have not had time to discuss by interviewing Mr. Hilliard, but I was able to find out from the office, just so Janelle knows too, there are no other applicants. And I've seen, I've seen him personally in the ZBA operating for the last couple of years. If Janelle would like to interview him, then I'm okay with pulling this also, but there really isn't anybody competing for this and they're worried about making sure they can reach quorums in the meantime, so.
And traditionally, we move, we move alternates up before new applicants traditionally as well.
But I defer to-
Right.
-Janelle if she wants to talk to him.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Excuse me, it might be worthwhile pointing out that the appointments of additional election workers will help us with the ballot coming up, October 24th on Cape Cod Tech. That's a logistic, to quote, need a nightmare, I guess, so this will help.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Public hearings and presentations, so tonight starts our annual meetings with committees. First up tonight is the Community Center's Facilities Committee.
Good evening.
Good evening, Lee.
You have your report from us. I will ask if you have any questions.
Very detailed, thank you.
Yes. Everybody's sworn in, everybody's-
I like that part. Great job. Start off questions from the Board. Larry?
I have one, Lee. I'm not sure whether it's your report or Carolyn, your weekly report. I've gotten a bit mixed up, but there's a comment about your new hearing assistance equipment-
Yes.
-that's coming in and I wonder if that's movable because we're not really equipped up as well as we should be for this room if we had a, you know, request for hearing disabled. So if that's true, then that gives us a resource here as well.
It absolutely is mobile and it can be moved to any place and pretty close to having all of the directions and things done with Jamie's assistance. I can't take credit, so yes.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Thank you. Julie?
Oh, I thought the reports were great, very thorough and, and good news all around, so thank you.
Janelle?
I don't have any questions.
Don?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Hi, Lee.
Hi.
The only question I had was relative to the goals and objectives for the coming year and number three is establish correct staffing for the community center. I'm assuming that that's a discussion to start bubbling up so that it gets to town meeting because if you needed augmented staffing-
Yes.
-the staffing plan would have to change to reflect that.
Yep. That's the plan. We're starting, gonna work it up.
Anything else?
No.
Any requests from us?
We need one new member.
One new member? Yeah, I saw that in there. So they are, I know that's on the list, but for the public.
Yep. We need one more member for the facilities committee. That's, that's about it.
And when do you meet, Lee?
We meet on the second Friday of the month at 10:00 AM at the community center.
Okay. The only other comment I did, I didn't, I didn't write it down, but you mentioned in your report establishing agreements in, in town facilities or town buildings and you did plural, so it wasn't just community center. Can you just elaborate on that? Middle school?
Our director spends most of her time trying to fill the middle school, so I think-
Okay. So those two buildings. Great. Thank you. That's it. Very detailed, great report. Thank you. And thank you, Ralph. Next up is the Council on Aging and is, is Judy Wilson in? She is here. Stand up so we can recognize you anyway, our new Council on Aging Director.
You beat me to the punch, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't get a chance to meet, to meet Judy.
We are, we are thrilled and, and to have Judy on staff. We had our first meeting with Judy last week, both with the Council on Aging and with the Friends in the Council on Aging. It was our annual joint meeting and we're thrilled to have Judy. She's got great experience, she's got great enthusiasm, she's systematic, she believes in policies and procedures and she's developed some great programs in Orleans that we're looking forward to bringing here to Harwich. So please welcome Judy, if you would.
Great. Thank you and welcome, Judy.
And I am Richard Waystack on behalf of the Council on Aging. I'm fortunate to have Vice Chair Lee Culver, the Honorable Ralph Smith, also members of the committee who are here this evening. You have my report in file, I believe, and it was my first year filing. I'm relatively new chair for this particular committee. I want to go over just a few highlights if I can. This year, Council on Aging, Board, and Staff are in transition. Long-term, wonderful Chair Adrian Johnson and her husband Joe Johnson, who was Vice Chair for many, many years, resigned due to an illness with Adrian. Unfortunately, this past summer, she succumbed to that illness and we miss her greatly. We also had a staff turnover as well. We had two long-term employees, both retired the same day. Gail Crowell, longtime administrator, and Barbara Ann Foley, the longtime director, both have, have retired from municipal service. We wish them both well in their endeavors. As a result, we had an interim director and Mr. Clark was, was thrown into the midst of Council on Aging. I think actually it was great. I think it was great both for the council and for Mr. Clark, getting up close look at the operations of the Council on Aging. He was very involved with us, with our committee. We appreciate his efforts as well. I was going to say, we invited two new members, our Director Judy Wilson, but also long-term employee up here at the Building Department, Marie Carlson, was hired to replace Gail Crowell. She is now on staff. Judy and Maria are working together and again, they've been a great team so far. Our, according to Town Clerk Mr. Sett, we are all duly sworn in, we have all received our ethics and with your previous action of the resignation of Dr. Aaron, we are just one member shy. And my understanding, I spoke with a few people last week, there have been two applications submitted downstairs for people who are interested in serving in the Council on Aging. So if you could, your interview committee could, at the appropriate time, find us a new member, we would sincerely appreciate it. That's it. I'm open to any questions. My report is on file.
Also a very detailed report. Thank you. Don?
Very good report.
Thank you.
Janelle?
Yep, no, so thanks.
Julie?
Just want to say you have some great programs. I've looked at them in the past and in your reports, so they're excellent. Thanks.
Just wait till next year.
Do you have me a better report or more action?
Well, you know what? It's interesting. Frankly, it's going to be either more programs and I will just point out one brief thing that we did do last year is we, we created some focus groups for people who are using and not using the services of the Council on Aging to try to see what programs people want. We have a very diverse senior population. I am a proud member and carry my AARP card in my wallet and, and then we have folks on the other end of the spectrum who are a little bit older, various needs for our seniors. So we're looking and really and truly, you can't, you don't know how excited I am to have Judy with us because we're going to be addressing some of those needs and expanding services to the seniors of this community. So, good way to start out with the facilities and Council on Aging. Quick reports, I'm done.
Yeah, great. Very detailed. Chris, did you want to add anything since you were the interim director? Do you? Thanks, I'm going.
Well, I was thinking about this, I appreciate the opportunity. I, I think it really is a good group of people down there. It was excellent to be able to meet folks and it did give me a window into something that I don't normally have a window into. I do think that there is room for improvement. I think Judy is a great vehicle for that improvement, so I do think over the next budget cycle, we will see some changes being made down there and rightfully so, to kind of improve. So I, I just want the Board to be aware as with the community center having potentially an additional staff request being made, that there will be some changes to Council on Aging and whatever there are changes is always a, a budget impact to those elements. So something that we will be looking at and making sure that we support that effort to make sure we get a better product. But very, very happy and I thought it was a, it really was a good experience and great people. You know, it's nice to be able to reach out and have direct contact. In fact, I think I spent one afternoon on the front desk actually answering direct inquiries, which I hadn't done in a long, long time. So it was nice. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chris.
Now, they, they do a great job. I had a friend in, in some trouble and I contacted Kevin and very prompt response and very helpful, so.
Great.
You know, all the activities.
Thank you. Thank you very much and welcome again, Judy. Okay, up onto old business, wastewater governance discussion. Larry, I'm going to let you start with this.
We discussed this some last week and Chris had sent a memo. My comment was, I wanted to see if we could clarify that a bit on going forward, so basically I've, I've taken that information, had some discussions with others and let me just say visually, it's, it's fairly straightforward. How we sort it out may be a little more complicated, but visually, you can look at the, us, the Board of Selectmen going forward, fulfilling our charter responsibilities as being, setting the policy for town and town actions. In this case, that involves the implementation of the CWMP, acting as the 208 Wastewater Management Authority. I can read some more details, but I just want to set the stage. Worried about how we set priorities for land use controls if, when we get that way, fertilizer actions, so on, the overall policy. As you know, there's eight phases in the CWMP. Basically, at the end of each of those phases is a construction project. We build something. You know, right now, we're getting ready to, to build, put pipes in ground and construct piping, the connection to Chatham. So the next phase is, once we complete a phase, then would be to pass that on to the Water and Wastewater Commission to do what they do and that is, is to worry about operation and maintenance as they do now for water, but add to that their duties to operate and maintain the wastewater system. So it'll be a handoff at, at the end of each phase. The, right now, if you look at our charter, Dan Pelletier Superintendent was actually dotted line responsibility, if you will, to the town administrator. And that's, you're shaking your head, but I just, unless I misread that.
That's not in the charter.
There's no, there's no reference in the charter in terms of wastewater.
No, not for wastewater, water.
Water.
There is for water.
There's no dotted line responsibility either of the superintendent.
Let's look, let Larry finish them up.
I'll go back and I, I just read that for the water, that there was a, you can clarify that language for me, Don, but I, unless I misread it, that's what I, what I saw. But nevertheless, going forward, the water superintendent's job is primarily for water, actually, but if we expand this to have some role in wastewater, I think that primarily is when it's transferred over, but we could use his vice to help out in the meantime. Let me just, I can go, maybe I'll just go through more detail on this. The dot points I have on this is act as wastewater management authority responsible for meeting to the section 208 requirements, implementation of the comprehensive wastewater management plan as approved by the Cape Cod Commission and the Commonwealth Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs, essentially DEP. Implementation of a phase describing the plan includes overall policy authority including construction, project development, construction-related capital funding. And then, of course, we're concerned about town policies as regard to fertilizer management, effluent recharge, if that comes back and is a concern for us, we have to consider that. Land use controls, we talk about this all the time, but to be eligible for SR, state revolving fund, funding, we have to meet certain land use controls, which would certainly be up to us and when we talk about open space and how we move ahead and do that. Alternative technologies, that's a consideration of how we, how we fit in our plan. Regional approaches, right now, as you know, we're meeting monthly with Dennis and Yarmouth about the possibility of having a regional sewer plant and then all of us connecting to that. Same way we do with Chatham, you know, it's driven by cost-saving discussion. And then, of course, funding the planned capital budgets. We, we're concerned with how we generate revenue, bless you. I mentioned the state revolving fund and we'll have to look at sometime, I'm sure, as we have in the past with other activities as a wastewater- as we have in the past with other activities, is the wastewater enterprise fund, so we have a way to keep the money going. And then, if we were to create a water, wastewater commission, the proposal's been made, which I build in this, is that we'd expand the three-member water commission right now to a five-member water and wastewater commission elected. And we would hand off, at the end of each construction, then, we would hand off essentially that operation for them to take over. The, in the, as I visioned this, and I think the operations and maintenance would essentially mirror what they're doing now for water. That would include expansion of the Water Superintendent's position to include wastewater responsibilities. And I've said here, I proposing that, because he's picking it up later, it makes sense to at least have him, have him or her, want to tie his position, not person, but have some tie-in to the town administrator, first to provide input, because he's going to take it over at some point, or she's going to take it over at some point, but then he's prepared. And that pretty much describes it. The part that we've talked just briefly here, and I want to throw it out, because we've had discussions, I know we have some other committees had discussions on this as well, is that the idea is we need some type of project manager to be sure this carries through. Now, that could happen by hiring someone, which I would be opposed to, because it's big money, you're hiring contract facility to help out. Chris has made a strong argument that he can fulfill that role of project management. I think that's a critical thing to happen. You know, we're talking about big money, and we need to be sure we have a point person that carries through. I bring this into discussion, because I think we're relying on Chris as how that works with this workload and how that goes forward. At some point, maybe a year from now, maybe some months from now, we may look at this and say, you know, that we really do need someone to take that responsibility, per se. And that could be, you know, well, my brothers personally would be, use a contract person for that. But I think I want to leave that open for now, because we want, again, this is an important project, and I want to be sure we have the proper resources to make it happen. So that's my overview, and that would-
Great. Thank you, Larry, and thank you for all the work. Don, you want to comment on the piece that you were commenting on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to when I was taller and had a lot more hair and appeared in front of the Board you were sitting on, with the Charter Committee, we had discussed back then that there was a schism that was created by the hiring of the water wastewater superintendent, because there's nothing in the Charter that even talks about a wastewater superintendent. The water, and the reason I said that there was a schism is, in the Charter, there's, much like the library trustees manage and hire the employee who is the librarian, the water superintendent is hired and governed by the water commissioners. There is no dotted line authority written in the Charter anywhere.
Right.
And that's a new creation.
Okay. Let me, and I'll go back and read that. It might say it will help the town administrators. There's a, I'll give you that. Well, the point I didn't make was-
We, I, we've had this conversation, so I'm going to let Chris chime in, and then we'll finish, because Chris has an answer. This is a conversation that we, as a Board, had last year several times.
If I can, just one quick comment. I forgot to mention that one of the statements in here, at least, if it's not there, I intend to be there, is that this would require Charter change.
Yes. Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I think that's a key component, that the change from a three-person elected Board that does just water to a five-person elected wastewater slash water is going to require a Charter change. You know, I will not kind of shy away from that. When I was the Water Superintendent down there, I definitely advocated to the water commissioners that they should create a position that has water slash wastewater, and we should recruit somebody to fill that. So, you know, I think it's important to take a step when you know you're going to be undertaking a $200 million project over 40 years. You need the tools to be able to do it. So maybe we get a little bit in front of doing the Charter change, but I think you need the resources on the ground, because the simple fact of the matter is, we have finished Phase One, or almost finished Phase One, or well underway to doing Phase Two. To the, to the point about the project manager piece, now Bob Dunkinson, over in the town of Chatham, administers everything, and it's about having administrative skills to be able to oversee these projects. And, you know, I really do believe, it's not that Chris Clark is going to do everything. It's what the Chris Clark Town Administrator will continue to oversee large-scale projects, and will manage those projects. We did Muddy Creek. Muddy Creek was done as a partnership, $7 million, $6 million. That was done as a partnership, in which I attended most of the meetings. I think, actually, Larry, you were on that committee initially as well. And then Bob, Bob Cafarelli, the engineer, was the primary person to do the paperwork. So it was a, it was a tag team. We're currently doing $7 million on Sacotucket on the water side, and I work very closely with John to make sure that we get that project underway. And the day-to-day will be left to John, but John knows that he has a resource in me, and he can call me to work through those issues. So it's more about setting up, what is the team going to be to do wastewater? And the Board has already approved a $2 million contract with CDM, and CDM, I think I had told this to somebody, you know, I went into their offices in Cambridge, and they literally built the wastewater facilities for the city of Hong Kong. This is not a big deal for them. They have the resources to be able to do this. So the fact that we have the engineer already lined up and already on board gives me a great comfort level. It's just a matter of making sure that, you know, we keep things on a reasonable keel, and that we don't just spend, you know, money. Money has a limit, and that's usually the role that I play, is to make sure that we're living within those budget guidelines that we have set out for these programs. So I think that's kind of the plan going forward. There'll be a team environment, myself, hopefully Dan Pelletier would be a great resource for, to assist me in that, and then CDM would be, who we would be overseeing. Similar model to how we've done several other projects. So that's the way I see it kind of unfolding. And I think the scope that was done is very much within the, within the parameters of what we have talked about, and what had been laid out by the previous Board and the current Board.
Thank you. Noreen?
Good evening. Noreen Donahue, I'm speaking on my own behalf, not representing any town committee. So with the multitude of wastewater committees we've had over the past 15 years that have done marvelous work, back in the 2012, 2013 era, there were three committees operating. One was the Wastewater Task Force, one was the Wastewater Citizens Committee, and the third was the Wastewater Implementation Advisory Committee. That committee had a very limited charge. It only existed for 18 months. Its charge was to look at only two things: the governance of the wastewater project and the funding. The very strong recommendation of that committee was that the project go-forward, roughly as described by Larry, with the assistance of a project manager. So I'm here to briefly advocate for that. I've been briefly advocating for that for about five years now. So I'll give it one more shot. I would say, in difference to the comments of Christopher, in comparing it to the harbor or other things, certainly we find differences. But I would say to do this project correctly, which is what that committee said, we really need to have an intimate knowledge of those 600 homes. To do this really right, we really need to know the streets, the homes, the layouts. Chris, as good as he is, cannot possibly have that kind of detail knowledge of the first phase of the operation. The person that was envisioned for a project manager wasn't necessarily an engineer. It was meant to be a community liaison person, or a point person. It was conceived to be a contractual, part-time person. It was conceived to be a position that might even morph eventually to be an assistant to Dan Pelletier, once that's handed over, or something like that. I would argue, having been the manager of a municipal utility company, I would say that to look at the operations of a municipal utility, as opposed to the setup and development, are two very different creatures. And I don't believe Dan, as good as he is, has setup and development within his job description. And I think we tend to say, well, wastewater is under him, so we should use that, but he definitely has the operations of it, but not the setup and development. I mean, there, it's really a hand-holding period to do it properly. I also think that we might learn so much from this phase, perhaps we wouldn't need this in Phase Three or Phase Four. I'd rather have it now and not have to use it again than to go without something like that and find out that there was a hole in our organization. The hole being the community tie for those first, the 600 people, and then five years from now, the 400 homes to follow. I do feel that whatever committee, I know you dissolved the existing committee last week, whatever committee you might propose, might be able to fill a piece of this hole, but it's never the same as having a paid employee. Not at this stage, when we're entering the $200 million business. And I can't help but fear that something will suffer, whether it's administration, whether it's the Water Department, whether it's the wastewater project itself. So I definitely could go on all night, but I'm not going to do that. This was the strong recommendation of a committee that you charged to look at this for two years, and I hope you'll give it some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen. Julie?
And speaking to that, and speaking to what you said, Chris, I do remember us talking, you know, when we approved the money towards CDM Smith, and it seemed to make the most sense, in the sense that they had the extensive knowledge of the project. But I do think that Noreen's identifying a piece that we may find ourselves in, just, just from my knowledge in, of watching Chatham go through some of this, is that the identification of those 600 homes and figuring out, you know, and I know CDM Smith has that information, but in terms of a public outreach and that kind of connection, I'm already getting questions about, you know, contractors and such, and we've touched upon that in our meetings about, you know, whether or not you can use your own person and blah, 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 and how we'll have a list. But even the, people are wondering, well, which homes are going first? The other thing I've seen delay the Chatham project at times, is they have to get easements, you know, to make certain connections, and that can be timely. And if you don't have somebody driving that piece of it, then we're going to have even further delays. And there's probably a lot more than, you know, those are things that stick out in my mind that I've seen, but I'm sure there's much more than I can even fathom. So we may really want to think about that, of having somebody that is a town person, maybe they work in conjunction with CDM, but so that we move the project along. Because really, if we move it along, we're not going to have as many delays that will cost us more in the long run. I don't know, I think it's a good idea.
I'm just going to just read the second bullet point. So we'll assign day-to-day administrative duties to the town administrator, who in turn will work with applicable staff to maintain compliance with state and county regulations. So I think that does encompass what Noreen said, and I think it encompasses what you just said. So, in my mind, we're here to talk about the ultimate governance of wastewater, not the employee. We should still discuss an employee, and that's still a very relevant part of this. What this says is, you know, we've been struggling and talking now for two years on wastewater governance, and who's going to govern it, and who's going to manage it. So the past Board discussed it, and this really is a model of what the past Board came up with. Through all the material, Noreen, I do appreciate everyone you mentioned, because I did read it all. This has also been brought before the Water Commissioners, and they have endorsed a five-member Board, and to Don's point, recognizing a Charter change. Of course, we'll have to do that. But if you look at what this actually says, this is us as the Board of Selectmen, as the governors of the wastewater project. And I think it gives enough, in the paragraph that I just read, or the bullet that I just read, enough scope where if we decide that we want to add an employee, we can talk about that. Now, this is a 200, 200 to 240 million, we're throwing away, around a lot of numbers. But it's also over 40 years. So if you look at the piece that's right now, which is four or five years, it's a fraction of that. And obviously, it's an important fraction of that, but we did spend a lot of money to hire a very professional consultant to put together that information for us. Once we get that information and the map, I see Ed, once we get the map and that information, we can certainly decide if we need to go forward with another employee. And I'll remind this Board, you know, our budget message is due, and we talked a lot about budget last year's Board, and sacrificed two new firefighters and a police officer last year, and decided that we would make it a priority for this year. And there has to be an end at some point to hires, and we certainly don't need to hire anyone until we do have to hire that person. And again, voting on a governance model, I don't think we have to make that decision as part of this. Ed, do you want to speak? And then I'll get back to the Board.
Ed McManus. I think, you know, what you're talking about for an eventual governance model is fine in terms of operating the sewer system with the Water Superintendent and the Water Commission, potentially a five-member commission rather than a three-member commission, is fine. My concern is the development piece, which would happen before the Water Department would take over. You know, maybe now I was a co-chair of the Building Committee for the Montomay Regional High School, and in that process, we had an owner's project manager. We had an architect, we had engineers, we had all of those specialties, but we had a professional who represented our interests through it, represented our interests through the development of all of the construction contracts and bid documents. And in some cases, there was disagreements on what the public interests were between the project manager and the architect. And I'll tell you, the committee on this, the school committee, the building committee and the school committee were well-represented by having a project manager take us through all of that. And I would urge you, maybe not right now, but to bring on a project manager, and it could be brought on, that position can be brought on as part of the cost of the project. It doesn't have to come out of the town's current general funds. I mean, that was, you know, the project manager that was hired as part of the school project was paid for out of the building funds.
So you're, you're both, Noreen, I'll speak to you too, talking about hiring somebody above the $3 million contract we just gave to an engineer and an architect for them to design this for us?
Yes.
Somebody to scrutinize their work?
Somebody to scrutinize their work to make sure that when that's, when that goes to bid, that the bid documents are done properly, that makes sure all of the DCAM certifications for all the contractors you're going to be hiring are proper, and that the research is done into those potential contractors are done well. You know, there's a lot, lot of areas that, that need to be taken into account. And, you know, not all, not, not at every step is the interest of your designer the same as the interest of the public. And that's what is important, to have somebody to watch out for the public's interest.
Thank you, Ed. Chris?
Just to add, I want to make sure that there's some clarity that under, and I agree 100% with Ed, that there's definitely a role for owner's project manager. Under the procurement law, they break it out into what they call vertical construction, building buildings, and horizontal construction, putting pipes in the ground. And under vertical construction, you have to have an owner's project manager for any project over 1.5 million. So the law compels you to do that. That law does not, does not compel the town to do it on horizontal construction. So, one of the things of just listening, and it is interesting, you know, to have intimate knowledge and to have the 600 homes and that interaction, you know, there probably is going to be some value to having a resource to do that, whether that's, you know, someone that we hire on a part-time basis, or someone that we can contract with through, through CDM. I think what we'll, what we can attempt to do is try to build that into the, into the system, you know, when we go ahead with the 20- know, when we go ahead with the $22 million for the development in East Harwich, to make sure that on a day-to-day basis, if there are several questions. But, you know, to have staff on board for development when we have a five-year hiatus after this project goes in, you know, to me, it just lends itself to having it be a contract service for that period of time until it gets up and running and then phased over.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Noreen?
Just briefly, Ed, in addition to Ed's comments, the really strong recommendation of the committee wasn't the type of project manager that was solely associated with bids, procurement, and those documents. It was really the community liaison piece, to be paid only as used. Certainly, nobody wants, and the report went into that, nobody wants anybody loitering on our paycheck for all that many years, which was why they specifically recommended that approach as opposed to building in regular staff into the water department. So it was meant as a temporary effort, a ramping-up effort to gain knowledge for a person that might become an employee eventually, or might not. So, but I do agree totally that this discussion is a subset of the governance issue, which certainly can go on first and then be discussed later. I just didn't want to lose the opportunity to advocate.
Thank you, Noreen. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As per the, to the governance portion, that's kind of why I was making the comment I made before, and follow me here. We either do or we don't mean that we build this thing under our Aegis and then hand it over. If we are handing it over, currently, it says in 6-6-3, the water commission in the charter, "The commission shall appoint a water superintendent and shall request this officer to cooperate with and be responsive to requests for the town administrator's office." If indeed that's what we are going to do and just add wastewater to it and then hand it off to operate it, which is the governance part of it, who constructs it and who operates it? I don't think anybody in this board wants to operate a massive organization. I mean, these guys operate pipes in one direction, and typically, if you look around the state, there's a lot of places that have that combination going as a waterworks thought. My only concern is that we make it clear, because dotted line is kind of like a jargon from a corporation. It doesn't really say, how does this thing really work? My final comment is one that I use all the time. When everybody's responsible for everything, no one is responsible for anything. So we can't have two or more bosses. And that's, I just want to make that clear, even with the charter request.
Thank you. Ed?
I just want to make sure it's clear. The project manager position that we hired was a contract position. It, you know, unfortunately, we still have him because we're trying to get the final agreement done on the heating and air conditioning so we can close out the project, but it'll end that involvement. But the other point that Noreen was making, I'm having a hell of a time with themes today. Anyway, was that our project manager was also the one that did that sort of public participation. In case of a school building project, that public participation not only was with the public, but with the faculty, with the administrative staff, coordinating all of the meetings between the designers and those groups to make sure that what they needed was being reflected in the design. And to also, a big piece of it was to make sure as the design and the process went forward, that the construction project worked because it was happening right on top of an operating school, much as this project will be happening right in everybody's front yard for an extended period of time, to make sure that the public is well-served in that process.
Thank you, Ed. Larry?
A couple, a couple items. One is that, I actually had the charter, so you beat me to reading this, and I admit I took some liberty from the request of dotted line. My thought process on that was, is that the water superintendent, water superintendent now reports to water commissioners. If that were to move to wastewater and water, that person would report to that commission. What I'm trying to imply here is, I was taking this phrase, is that that person would be responsive to the town administrator to provide information and help if required.
And not supervised.
And that's, pardon?
But not supervised.
No, no way supervised. That's why I put the dotted line, not supervised, adding help. It's clear the organizational thing is straight. So I just wanted to clarify that. My hope is, is that we will go ahead and approve this suggestion as a governance model for water and wastewater. My second hope is, or request is, is that we go ahead with the idea of a project manager, and I would ask Chris to identify the pieces that go into that project manager, because we've looked about the, so we have, you know, keeping track of the homes, as Julie says and everyone says, do the detailed part of that. Who's going to do what to whom on that? And we can revisit this in a few months or six months, and decide whether we need to assign someone to that. But I would not want, I'd like to keep the project manager concept alive, because that's different than deciding who does it. We can decide who does it, and I'd like to go have the governance model, so we have that going. We can decide on that and move forward.
Thank you, Larry. With that, I would ask you that you put as an agenda item to me what you just said, project manager, and what you want from Chris.
I got to remember that.
Then I'll agenda, and we'll talk about it.
Well, he doesn't need to remember. I'll just add it to the capital request. I mean, that's what I'll do.
I shall do that. I'll put this in, because I'd like to get this settled and going forward, so it's not a discussion point when we get into the other.
Yeah, let's, let's keep the commentary aside. If you want a project manager request, let's have an agenda item, Chris, then we'll have the conversation on, and then we'll decide what and how we're going to do that, if we're going to do that.
Well, we can move ahead with the governance model.
Julie, do you have any comments?
No, I, first of all, Larry, I appreciate the work into this, and I agree. I think it's, step one is, as you indicated, Mr. Chair, and as you indicated, we need to do something, we need to make a move, we need to get a direction. So I would like to move forward on this as well.
Don, any further comments?
Yep. Would you be willing to incorporate the language as it exists in 6-6-3?
I already made a note to do that.
So if you update that, I'm all in, just so it says the same thing, because dotted line didn't mean anything to me.
I, yep.
So Don, will you make a motion on this to include that, so that we don't have to bring this back?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the governance of future water/wastewater commission with a change, as noted, to the duties of the superintendent and who he or she reports to.
Just make it contain the charter.
Yeah.
Six.
In accordance with the way 6-6-3 reads currently.
Right.
Thank you. Can I get a?
Second.
Okay. Chris, that was a mouthful. Did you get it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Andy's going to be watching this.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next up is the wastewater implementation committee, charge revision. Wouldn't be a charge revision, it'll be a new charge because we will be forming a new committee. Larry, I know you just talked a lot, but do you want to start again?
Well, my first thought is, I hate the title. I would suggest we change it to wastewater advisory committee, just so it's different than implementation. I, other than that, we had, as Noreen mentioned, we had three different committees, and they really have done yeoman's work. We've gotten through with an accepted comprehensive wastewater management plan, which we should all be very proud of. We're one of the few towns on the Cape that has that as far as we are. In saying that, as we talked about before, we've now moved from developing a plan and getting that accepted to actually putting the plan in place. And the attempt of this charge is to change this committee from helping on the planning to helping advise on the implementation of that plan. And it changes, I think, how we're looking at the staff. The staff before was actually helping the committee move ahead with the comprehensive, the CWMP, I'll shorten that phrase. The roles are reversed now. Now we're asking the committee to help the staff, because the staff, as we've talked about, is much different. It's going to be involved with engineering, with technical discussions, and we're expecting town staff and consultants, however, Chris uses everyone, to move this project forward and connect with Chatham. And so in saying that, I said that pretty much in introduction, is the major responsibilities of this committee then would be to coordinate and assist public outreach as it relates to activities and education regarding implementation of the CWMP activities, continue oversight of the ongoing water monitoring program, review and update the CWMP as needed. Sharon's in the audience here. We have a tremendous database and spreadsheet to help us keep track of all the items that we've agreed to meet with the 208 Plan, meeting the Cape Cock Commission in the state, develop a, and maintain a database on immersion technologies, which is a fast-moving field, as we all know, advise the Board of Selectmen on wastewater cost allocation, policies and technology, recommend charter revisions, special legislation and zoning changes which may be needed. I know, Don, this is near and dear to your heart, but if we talk land controls and, you know, how we, we've already talked about one possible charter change, and undoubtedly, we talk alternative technologies, there could be others. Aid in preparation of required town meeting articles, monitor the CWMP for regulatory requirements, and money's always near and dear to our hearts, so help with external funding. I'm recommending that this committee be composed of five members. We've talked about my original, discussed three, we came back and discussed some, my one was seven, came back some with three. I think five is, I think we need five for quorum reasons, but also, my concern is, we have at least enough members that we can count on having a good interaction with different parts of town. I don't want to shortchange the personal interactions of a committee with those we work with. And they can serve a three-year term, of course, staggered terms. They'd be able to add ad hoc members for specific expertise on a limited basis. The committee would meet monthly more frequently, responsible for holding periodic public meetings, and provide update of CWMP regulatory commitment to the Board of Selectmen, and provide annual updates. And I've said the committee will dissolve, the Board of Selectmen will look at this committee at the end of each phase to see where it's going. I didn't want to put a time limit on it, to say five years, 18 months, because at each phase, I think we may decide that they're needed, you know, not needed, or the role may change. I didn't want to predict out 40 years either. So that's what I'm, that's the charge I have in front of you.
Thank you, Larry, and again, thank you for the work. Don, you want to start off on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first thought is just a question, Larry. I thought at one point, when we were talking about dissolving the one committee to move to the other, that it was going to be more staff-driven.
This is supposed to be staff-driven. This is advising staff.
That's populated by?
Volunteers, to advise staff.
Okay. If that's part of its thrust, my concern here with this is the same as it was over the last couple of years. You also want to have it public-driven, not just outreach outwardly, but solicit towards, in terms of what the public wants. The public's going to pay 240 million, upwards of 240 million to this. I'd like to make sure that they're kind of invited to the party. To that point, a lot of these meetings were in the morning or in the afternoon. I mean, I really would like to see a reboot here, where if the public actually matters in this equation, that it's in the evening, where people can come and say, here's what I think. Since I'm spending money, I'd like to have some opinion on this. It's not just an infomercial at the end telling them why this is the neatest thing since sliced bread. So I could buy into this to the extent that there's a commitment, a renewed commitment to understanding that this is going to be disruptive and expensive as we move to each phase, and we want to know how people feel about things.
So specifically on comment, in, comment on any of the content of what the charge would be? I hear, I hear comments about who's going to be on it. What do you, what do you have to say about the guts of this?
Yeah, the coordinate and assist with public outreach doesn't go far enough. It should be coordinate and assist with public outreach and soliciting public input.
I can, I can certainly add that. I quite frankly interpret outreach as a two-way street, and that definition is more narrow than what you see it, Don, and I'll add that specifically, because it's, that's why my suggestion, we need a five-member committee to solicit input in different areas. So that's why I brought that comment in. But I take the point, and Mike, I'll revise that, to add that specific statement.
I agree with you, just for the record. I agree that it says it, but certainly, we can add it. That's.
I don't want any doubt that this is a, it's a two-way street.
And I totally trust that the word outreach was intended that way, but I'm just concerned to make sure as we go forward, and we're not going to be here for all of that, that it's clear to everybody successively that we're interested in listening to your opinions on this, too. If it could have more than one possible solution in Phase Two, why don't we listen to the public, and why don't we make it convenient for them to go to the meetings, so that it's not tucked away in a morning somewhere?
Okay. Any other comments, any content comments?
Um, oh, sorry.
From Don, you all set, Don?
I'm good.
That's it? Okay. Janelle?
I like the idea of changing the word implementation to advisory, because like Don was saying about the charge I wrote recently, implementation is used about six times in the first paragraph. So if the name of the committee is Wastewater Advisory Committee, I think that will make it a little bit more eloquent, really. I, you know, I've not been the liaison any of the time that I've been on the board to this committee, and I just am concerned about five members. I would think you would want more. But that's just me. I don't have a total basis for that, but that's all.
See, I'm trying to be agreeable.
He wanted seven.
I think seven's better for this, especially if we're going to have, hopefully, five water, wastewater commissioners. I think that we need more on the committee than we need making the actual decisions, you know, that voted upon.
My only comment is, on the last committee, it was our natural resource employee, two water commissioners, one of them was, and then the Director of Chamber of Commerce. This isn't like a, this isn't a committee that people have lined up to be on yet. And my concern with making it a seven-member committee is, I don't think we're going to fill the committee, and then you have a quorum issue on the other side. I think if we get an overwhelming response, since we're voting this committee, we can change the membership to seven anytime we want. So my own comment was, I thought three with some staff was a much better idea than five. I do get both Don and Larry's comments about getting out to the public and having enough people, and I also get, you know, a three-member board has open meeting law problems, because two of them can't talk in the grocery store. So the five-member board seems to make more sense for that reason. And I guess with that, I would ask Chris that if we have a three-member public board along with dedicated staff people, can those dedicated staff people vote? Even though if we put Dan Pelletier on there, for instance, he's not a resident of the town of Harwich, he can't vote.
Yeah, I've had a little, through you, Mr. Chair, I've had a little change of heart. Originally, I think Larry and I worked on this original charge when I first started to create the committee that's there now, and we had two professional staff. I think that, to Don's point, getting more public input and having just public staff, public people be on the committee probably makes more sense. Staff is obviously available whenever needed. I actually went to quite a few of the meetings myself, so I think that having five citizens probably makes sense, because then the professional staff can be available to them to interact with them. And I think just five tends to be a more functional number. And I do want to just, I know the committee did have some meetings that they scheduled in the evening, and they didn't get any better attendance, so they did kind of keep where they ping-ponged back and forth between day and night. Off and on they did.
Yeah, off and on, it wasn't consistent. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Julie?
I've got one more thing, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Just with, you know, even with five, I feel like some of these committees who already have fi, who only have five, still have issues meeting a quorum a lot of the time, especially in the winter. So, I, I still think that seven, seven public members would be better.
Yeah. I, at this, you know, I've obviously gone back and forth. I'm pressing for five right now. I think the key to that is the, is who we appoint, that we get people really dedicated to this. Sometimes if you ask for a large committee, you populate it with those who don't have the, this is one of their top priority.
Right.
And so, I throw that back a bit to the nominate, and, you know, we know people in town that this is really an important issue to them, and they're the ones that should be on this committee. And so, I think we want a screen, and equality makes a point.
Julie, and then Nori.
That speaks to exactly my only question in this, and I, and I get it, that we can't really answer until we see who volunteers for it. But where we do get to, you know, make those decisions about who's appointed, that we look if it's going to be five or seven. I'm in favor of five only because we do have a hard time filling committees. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to seven either. But is the definition of who we are looking for, because we kind of do need to have a good understanding of that as we try to fill it, because we would like to have a townwide sort of involvement, although initially, it's going to focus on certain areas. So, I think we just need to define that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I guess I'm here to harmoniously quibble. So, I think a name, you know, can often shape things. And that's the only reason I would quibble about the name. I think of this committee, I do anyway, as being, you know, the next generation, so it doesn't look like another duplicate of the last one. I think of this committee as truly being support. At this point, a $200 million project has been voted at the first stage. Now, staff is going to run this project. Administration in some form, whoever they delegate, all the other members at Chris's disposal, they will be the ones who run this project. I don't think of this committee as advisory anymore. I think of this committee as being an extension of that administration to be able to provide support primarily, Don, in the area of public intercourse. I mean, to me, that's a really strong item, whether it be meetings or everything else. But, you know, we all want this to go well. So, to make it go well, we have to be in touch with our voters. And so, to me, I would suggest it be the wastewater support committee or something like that, but not so much to quibble about the word, but to point out that this is now a committee to support, not really to advise. It's now administrations, it's now the Board of Selectmen's project to make the decisions and everything else. And whatever you folks want done, this would be one of your many tools to then go out and do things for you.
Thank you, Nori. Chris, on the, on the comment on the members versus the town employees. So, as you look through this charge, the major responsibilities of this charge, seek external funding, aid in the preparation of required town meeting articles, recommend charter revisions, advise Board of Selectmen on wastewater cost allocation. There's a lot of very deep work that needs to be done here, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done here by employees. So, you know, if we're going to set up another citizen-driven committee, they really need to have certain departments, I think, at their disposal. Because there's a lot of work on here that I don't see how the average person applies for a committee. And to your point about selecting who we get, we really do have to be selective on this committee with the amount of technical work that needs to be done in here. So, is there, is there, is there a way to do this? I mean, I'm still in favor of five, I'm not a favorite.
Yeah, I think if we keep five and all assigned staff to, you know, be ex officio or whatever, to be there. I do think it's important to think carefully, though. We did have the committee at the end. I know that, I saw one email that had a, basically a redrafting of what our engineer was putting together for the system. And I don't think that that's, you know, the appropriate role. So, I think the element about doing the public outreach and focusing on the education component, helping to make sure when we go to town meeting, it's going to have a favorable result with the charter review changes and things like that, are more the role elements that I think would, would serve very well. You know, putting together applications, I mean, the way I look at like seek external funding is if there's a legislative effort at the State House to, you know, that they would write letters of support and things of that nature, but not necessarily get into the mechanics. We'll, we'll do the mechanics staff-wise.
With the committee volunteers, assistance, if you ask, and recommendations.
I think one of the things, and Larry and I have met, I think, a couple times now on this topic, and one of the things that really kind of at least drives my thinking is the way that we've worked over the last two or three years. And, you know, Peter Dubacca, who it's, it's too bad that he has decided to kind of depart, but, you know, he would always stop in and talk, where are we, what are we doing? So, there was a lot of collaboration, and when he needed me, I would attend the meetings to make sure that we continue to move forward. So, I, I see that collaboration as, as long as we get the right people, it's always about the right people, that, you know, we can continue to have a successful road that we've been going down.
Okay, and then I think last comment on that is, there is, no matter what they're doing, the outreach, public outreach, there's, there's, in this phase anyway, for this town meeting action, there's going to be some money needed. So, this, this committee's going to have to go to you for brochure money, for event money, for, so they're going to need support. And I think that that's my biggest point. We're asking an awful lot of a volunteer committee. So, that, just to that point, prepare for that. And then, the other piece that I looked at was the, the database piece. So, that this committee's going to work with, and it says, let me just find it, says employee advisory committee.
Support development and maintenance.
Development, maintenance of a database of existing and emerging, no, no, that's not it, I'm sorry.
I forget my louie's, Michael. My intent on that was.
Comprehensive action database, and it, it doesn't refer to anyone specifically, Chris. I would, I would assume that that would be a Dan Pelletier.
That's my assumption, yes.
Who you're planning on having manage that database.
Yes.
So, the committee would work with Dan on following some of those actions and making sure they're done.
Yes.
Thank you. There was no name associated with it?
Sharon Fleeger. As far as a five-committee, member committee, I don't think that's a bad idea. With the exception, if you've got five volunteers, and there isn't anybody that's either a department head or something more from the town, five volunteers sitting at a meeting, all right, one can't really make much of a decision. We don't have the input from anybody, and it takes forever to get something done. So, if we're going to do a five-member committee, my suggestion would be three from the town, and then two, you said you didn't, I don't know whether you're thinking of Dan or, I don't know, somebody from planning, or somebody else from the town that is a town employee, I think, needs to be there. Because we have the meetings, and with five volunteers, then it's like, well, now we have to check with somebody, all right? Now, that, that's another month, all right, before anything gets done. Right now, we're coming up on the end of September. You guys are going to want a vote on that money come May. If we move that slowly that we did before, it's not going to happen. We need somebody there that can help make decisions and provide us information while we're at that meeting. But to have a meeting of five volunteers and then have to go back to somebody and find something out, then come back, and then discuss it and go back again, it's non-productive. That's the only recommendation I would have, having been on the committee before. And I'm not, I'm not condemning the committee. I'm just saying, there's a limitation as to what we can do. If we don't have the right people on that committee that can help give us information as well as being able to talk to the board and, and help make some decisions, because it, it doesn't happen. That's just.
Don?
And I don't know who you can put on there, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think either of these things preclude each other. I mean, we have a planning board that has a town planner as an assigned resource. We have a Board of Health that has a health director assigned as a, as a resource. If we have five volunteers and we assign two staff, whatever that relevant staff might be, they don't have to be committee members in order for them to be intertwined with the committee. They could be meeting with them.
Well, Sharon, in my sense on that would be four, exactly what Don said, to attend the first meeting and give direction, and say, this is what, this is the piece that we need to work on now for town meeting, and, and give an agenda, more or less. But I, I do agree with you on that. Larry?
Yeah, same thought. Five-member committee, but as we've talked, as Michael, you pointed out before, it's a long list of things here. This only works if there's a staff assignment to make it happen. Otherwise, it doesn't work. You know, we've talked, even maintaining a spreadsheet is someone else has to maintain that so the committee can review it. But I agree with the point, but I think five-member volunteer committee and then strong staff support to move it forward. My other, Michael, by me is, I'm not opposed to Nori's suggestion to change the title to support wastewater support committee.
Technical advisory committee?
Well, the thing is, I don't want to get wrapped up in someone designing the pipes.
Okay, so you're in favor of support.
I'm okay with support.
Don?
I'm morally compelled to agree because I dumped on Janelle over the repetitive use of a word already.
Chris, do you have any issues? And I know you reviewed it because I saw the email with you and Larry. Do you have any issues with the content in this charge before we vote on it? Okay.
Can I ask one thing? As, as, as we talk about the need for, you know, staff to be working with the committee, and I agree, I think you're right, we don't want to go in circles. Can we make part of that piece of this committee is that we always have one staff member attend these meetings, at least one? Because if one leaves that meeting, and they can, you know, rotate it, but if one is always there, they can quickly talk to each other the next day for follow-up, so that the next meeting, they come prepared. Like, it's, instead of having one person be there all the time, but have, if we've got five members, we've got five resources?
And I personally would leave that open as to when the, when the committee is formed and the chair makes an agenda. The chair should then request that they would like the planner to be at the meeting and give enough, or they would like the assistant.
Yeah.
Or they would like to, but certainly having a strong chair that puts together an agenda that is work productive rather than talk.
Right.
Would dictate which employee should be there.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be good.
So, can I get a motion on this? Larry, do you want to, or Julie, do you want to make a motion on this?
Probably there, if someone else does.
Just for the, just for the record, though, we're going to have it wastewater support committee.
Right.
Just, we need, we need to actually type this stuff up.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
She's going to make the motion, right?
Okay, so. I, Mr. Chair, I propose that we, we approve the creation, and this is a new charge.
You move?
I move. Did I not say that? I move, Mr. Chair, that we approve the new charge of creating a wastewater support committee that will help to serve and develop the comprehensive wastewater management plan. It will exist of five members, and will have point people within the department that will assist with meetings.
With the charge, that's written.
With the charge, that's written.
Second.
Did you second it?
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next up, under new business is it's referred, alleged violation of liquor entertainment license to administrative officer to conduct hearing. So, it would be my recommendation, same as last meeting, that we refer this to Chris Clark, Town Administrator, for an administrative hearing on the alleged allegation that's in your packet.
So moved.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Town Administrators' report?
Just on the, the last one, we do have that hearing scheduled for the, the first one that you referred to me as on the 27th. So, you'll, hopefully by the beginning of October, I'll have a report to you on that one.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. On the other elements that I have this evening, I did attend, I'm losing track of how many meetings I've been to. I, I think it was last Wednesday, I had a Cape Tech Building Committee meeting, and they have put, they put together a informational brochure. Again, we cannot advocate in municipal, in the municipal world here, but we certainly have an obligation to make sure we inform people. So, the, the Building Committee and the leadership over at Cape Tech Regional has, Regional Tech has put together a information. We did get a hundred copies delivered on Friday, so we will distribute these to various locations, and I'll have it scanned, maybe if Jamie can scan it and put it on the website, so we'll have it available. But just so folks are aware, obviously, October 24th is, is coming up. The, the next one, Mr. Chair, is, I know staff had asked me in terms of the 2018 Annual Meeting and Trade Show at the beginning of January. I know that we've had some, kind of, a lot of expense, because it's kind of a little bit, we're not sure how many people are going to attend from Finance Committee, how many people are going to attend from the Selectmen. So, you know, if we could get some sense, if people could just let Sandy know, and then obviously if the board wants to limit a number or rotate it, whatever the board wants to do. But believe it or not, geez, it seems like January's a long way off, but time flies. On, so that's that. On the capital budget, we have capital budget forms are due in on this Friday. I have a staff meeting tomorrow, so I know a couple members of the board attended the CPC meeting, and I think there was seven or eight different items that we had on there. So, we will try to put those in both. We did incorporate some of the CPC submissions into the capital budget, so we will attempt to do that. I think Capital Outlay Committee is meeting tomorrow at four o'clock. So, I'll probably put together, I know there's a few department heads in the, in the crowd, I will put together kind of a timeline when I meet with them tomorrow night for people coming in on the projects. And then, just as a heads up to, to folks, the five-year fiscal projection will be for the next meeting. So, Carol and I will go through a, what the next five years looks like from a financial perspective and see where we're going. That is a, I believe that's a charter obligation in the, in the, in the charter that we do it in September. So, we will get that on and have that presentation done as a, really a prelude or a kickoff to, to the meeting, to the budget cycle. And that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Selectmen's report, Larry?
Just one small item. I always like going to county meetings when I can brag that we're ahead of the rest of the world. And discussion last week about the counties working on a county-wide dredge permitting system. And of course, I could raise my hand and say, our master and conservation commission has already has that in hand, you know, what you guys have been doing. And so, good work, and we're ahead of that. But it, I think we still have to be appreciative that the counties actually is stepping up to take a bigger role, I think, in trying to support us. And so, we want to give them, give them credit for that.
Thank you. Julie?
Just want to congratulate Cindy and all the others involved in the Cranberry Festival, Norm, all our public safety, Carolyn, and all of you guys did such an amazing job. I didn't get to attend too much of it, but I did see Saturday night, what a great atmosphere it was, and I hope to see it again next year. It was excellent. Kudos to you guys.
Janelle?
I'll second that, too. I would like to remind the public that we have opened positions on our newly-formed Municipal Revenue and Economic Development Committee, so please come apply.
Don?
As well as other committees that they can find on our site. Going to also say the same thing about the primary festival, but nobody said it so far. The new location is really super. It's more amenable to what it is that everybody's trying to do, and it brings back the kind of feel that it used to have with, when it was in the front lawn of the high school. So, great job, everybody involved.
It was nice.
So, the board, I'm going to send last year's budget, budget message to each one of you. Please send me back comments individually on what you'd like to see in this year's budget message, so we can get that in ahead of time. The, Chris, if next week, if you can kind of give us an update on last year's audit, just to see if, if that's done or when that's going to be done.
Sure.
CPC, those articles all have to be in by October second, so any assistance the board can give Chris and staff on, on the administrative ones at least, we'd like to try and get approved some of those CPC requests this year. And just for the public, the gentleman who tried to speak at the beginning of the meeting tonight to correct us on our last week's meeting on marijuana was part of the pro-pot group that got, was pushing the legislation last year. I was at a debate with the DEA and Senator, Senator DiMascino from Plymouth, and that Mr. Ulrich spoke, and he was on behalf of the pot and getting the legislation passed. So tonight, I viewed it as a little more than concern public, and not being a resident of Harwich, this board voted and supported our public safety people last week, and if he'd like to request an agenda item, then, then we'll at least have the conversation.
What's more to that debate, Mr. Chairman?
I have nothing else. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.